I'd like to call the February 6, 2024, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the commission at our meeting this evening. All right, we come to the consent agenda. I believe Commissioner Wells had a couple of questions about an item or two. Terry, what were those?
Yes, thank you. On the tax collection report, I was just curious, under the public service, there is a decent amount of difference between the FY 23 and the FY 24, and I was just curious if you could speak to that, please.
Yes, ma'am, and Jennifer is here in case there's any questions, anything she wants to add. But on the public service, it is a function of the timing of when that was billed. That levy was actually billed later this year than it was last year. So the collection is a little bit later.
Okay, thank you. And the other one on the EMS station, I think it said 21% below the base scope. Can you just speak to that?
Are you speaking about the reduction that was saved with value engineering?
Yeah, let's see here, let me pull it back up. It said, when initially contracted as a cost control measure, the project was reduced 21%. And then...
Robert Brown.
Right, come on up to the podium for us, please, thanks. And this is on the architectural and engineering additions item?
Yes.
Thank you.
So initially, when we solicited for the designers, we did not have the full intent or scope, which included not the full recommendations of the... It's the EMS baseline analysis report in which stated basically what it recommended for this type of facility for Buncombe County to service the areas that they'll service. I was new to the county and not previous, so I went based off of the budget. And we advanced planned for that contract only based on the level of what was budgeted at the time. Keeping the project below 10,000 square feet is where it failed, which removed all the services required for the lead portions of it. And it also required a lesser station to be developed, basically a two-base station and an eight-person station versus what's recommended. And what we're moving forward with is a three-base station and a 12-person, in which is the recommended amount of station for the serviceability of that area and for that type of station. Because of that, I'm having to ask the designers and engineers to provide those additional services. And what we have is $190,000 for their base increase in their architectural and engineering services. And then $14,000 as an allowance because we also did not know the site at the time. It is at the Owen Pool property that we own. It has stormwater responsibilities in it, and it has wetlands delineation responsibilities, of which this allowance is for them to be able to manage those processes and the permitting that we have to do prior to construction. Anything else, any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and then before we vote on that, I'm sorry, I neglected to ask, are there any members of the public who have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we now come to public comment. So no one signed up for public comment, but are there any members of the public here who would like to address the Board during public comment? I don't think it's ever happened before. All right, great. Okay, moving on. The next item is, we don't have any presentations, so the next item is under a public hearing. We've got a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant's Coronavirus Program closeout. And Stoney Blevins from Health and Human Services is here to help us out with this item.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. We discussed this issue back in January, on January 2, and talked about the closeout of our Community Development Block Grant related to coronavirus funding. And CDBG does require a public hearing in order to close out one of their grants, and that's the purpose tonight. Just in review, some background, we applied for the grant back in October 6 of 2020. We received our award letter that December for $900,000, a maximum of $900,000. The funds were released to us by Rural Economic Development Division on August 15 of '21. We began to process invoices in October. And then the very last date we could process payments per the grant policy was in March of 2023. And then the grant period ended at the end of the last fiscal year on June 17. Just to give you a little bit of data, we were able to assist 206 unique households with mortgage assistance and/or utility assistance, expending $495,780 of the $900,000 allowable amount. We did talk a little bit about why we weren't able to spend it all. We think there was a lot going on at that time. And we launched our own mortgage assistance program during that time. We also lost a lot of time because of the amount of time it took us to receive the funds. By then, we also talked about how we had a very robust housing assistance program going that was funded by the U.S. Department of Treasury. And we were very robust in helping folks with that. I think the total ended up being about $13 million in assistance to the community. And we also couldn't serve anyone within the city of Asheville, so it limited our base of folks that we could serve as well because they received separate CDGB funds and they spent them in the city. We spent ours in the county. So our proposed next steps are to close out the grant by having a public hearing tonight and then a vote by the county commission.
Excellent. All right, Commissioners, if there's no questions at this time, let's go ahead and open the public hearing at 5:14 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing? All right, I will close the public hearing at 5:15 PM. Commissioners, are there any questions or is there a motion?
Motion to approve the closeout.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Ms. Pender, any items under the county manager's report?
No report.
Excellent. Okay, we do not have any items under old business. Under new business, the first item is a budget, is consideration of a budget amendment for conservation easements. And Jill Carter and friends are here to present this item.
Great. So again, I am the project manager for the Open Space Bond, and I'm here with Ariel Zype and Michelle Paliezy to request that the commission approve a budget amendment establishing two conservation easements as open space bond projects. A quick update on the open space bond process. As you'll recall, this commission approved the first open space project in September of last year, which was the Woodfin Greenway. Additionally, the application window for passive recreation lands is currently open, and we will be moving into project review and selection later this spring. And then finally, these two easements you're about to see are the first conservation easements to come forward as bond projects. A quick note that this bond funding is a total of $400,000 that we're requesting to go towards these two easements. The easement process would essentially mean that we are funding, we are partially compensating the landowners for the development value of their land. The landowners would retain ownership of these parcels, and the easement would essentially protect that land and conserve it in perpetuity. $150,000 of that total would go towards the Parm Fortner Farm. This project was brought forward through our farmland preservation program and was recommended by the Agricultural Advisory Board as a bond project. The other $250,000 would be for the Lake Eden Preserve. That project was brought forward through our Land Conservation Advisory Board process, which likewise recommended it as a bond project. Additionally, the commission previously approved the use of general funds for the transaction costs of both of these projects. And if approved, they would contribute a total of 366 acres of conserved land in Buncombe County. So with that, I'll pass it to Ariel.
All right, thank you, Jill. So just as a brief reminder, this is the criteria that the Board adopted last spring in reference to the Agricultural Advisory Board projects to be able to determine if they're eligible for easement purchase. So the Parm Fortner Conservation Easement Project meets six of the seven criteria for easement purchase. So this farm is a 30-acre farm off of South Turkey Creek in the Lester community. It is seen as a time-sensitive project due to the landowner situation. And we have about 54% prime soils on the property. So that's really productive soils that are fantastic for farming. So it is also a working farm, producing hay and beef cattle on the pasture land. And it also has a great scenic benefit. It's on the South Turkey Creek Road, which is part of the Farm Heritage Trail. So the community and tourists can drive across along the Farm Heritage Trail to enjoy some of these protected lands. So like Jill mentioned, we are requesting $150,000 to purchase the easement, which is simply purchasing development rights on this property. And the landowner is donating $150,000 in charitable donation. Oh, I'm sorry. In the bottom map here, you can see the four conservation focus areas that Buncombe County has designated. And you might be able to see the red box around the Parm Fortner property. So it is within the Lester Sandymush Conservation Focus Area. Here's a map giving you a bit of an overview of that region. So as you can see in that pink color, those are properties that are already protected in conservation easement, held by Buncombe County Soil and Water. And then the purple or pink outline is a project that we're currently working on, soon to be protected. So it will be adjacent to that property, so adding to a more public benefit by having contiguous parcels protected. And that is all for the Parm Fortner project. I'll hand it off to Michelle with Southern Appalachian.
Thank you so much, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm with Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy, and I wanted to talk to you about the Lake Eden Preserve Conservation Easement. As mentioned, this would be a bargain purchase of a conservation easement. The landowners, Lake Eden Preserve, will still retain ownership of the property. And Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy is bargain purchasing a conservation easement on it. We are satisfying three of the four criteria for eligibility for this bond program. And you can see in this map, the property is a 336-acre portion of a larger 539-acre parcel. That larger parcel is the historic campus of the Black Mountain College and is also the location of the Lake Eden Arts Festival and a number of other events and activities that happen. That area will be excluded from the conservation easement to allow for those activities to continue and some limited expansion of facilities as needed. The property contains a North Carolina State Designated Natural Area that's fully contained on the upper elevations of the property. At least four rare species have been identified up there so far, and it is bounded on three sides by protected ridge lines. So SHC has implemented a prioritization process for parcels within our geographic focus area. And this property rose to the rank of a top priority within that prioritization process. There are a number of other designations that highlight the high quality of natural resources found on this property, including above-average climate resilience and a large amount of water flowing through it. And you can see also on this map that it is very close to a very large network of protected land, which includes the Asheville Watershed, the Blue Ridge Parkway, Pisgah National Forest, Mount Mitchell State Park, and a number of other preserves and conservation easements held by Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy. So we have, I should say that we have desired to protect this property for decades now. And we're in a rare moment where we've reached consensus with both the landowners to move ahead with the conservation easement as well as on an agreed purchase price. So the project budget, we estimate to be slightly over $3.1 million. And we've negotiated a purchase price of $1.5 million for the conservation easement. Appraisal work is in progress right now, but we estimate that to be approximately a 50% purchase of the conservation easement. The remainder is a charitable donation from the landowner. We've also received a commitment from the state of North Carolina for acquisition funds as well as from a private donor. So those acquisition funds total $1.25 million. That leaves a shortfall of $250,000, which is what we're requesting from the bond today. And as mentioned, we also have received a commitment from the county to cover transaction costs along with additional transaction costs from the state. So this $250,000 would represent only 8% of the estimated project budget.
Thank you. So together, these two projects would bring us to a total of 83,047 acres of land currently in the process of being conserved, which means that we only have just over 1,000 acres remaining to reach our goal of preserving 20% of Buncombe County by 2030. With that, again, we are requesting that the Board approve the budget amendment establishing these two conservation easements as open space bond projects.
All right, thank you so much for the great presentation. Commissioners, are there any questions?
I'm sorry, I did too. I'm supportive of these, let me first say that. I am curious, though, to those of you working in this, because you're so close to the goal, is that going to go under consideration to increase? I know that doesn't have to do with tonight's decision, but just seeing that, I'm really curious. It's okay to say we haven't talked about it yet.
Well, that is something that they did bring for us to talk to our Climate and Environment Committee, and so I think maybe we're going to continue that conversation. They didn't mention it.
Thanks, Commissioner Wells.
I certainly would like to.
I would support that, that's great. Congratulations on being so close to the goal, that's terrific.
Thank you.
Build a bigger thermometer.
Parker, did you have something?
To clarify, on the map for the Lester area property, there was the pink outline and the yellow parcel in question. The areas, the pink outline, that's a done deal, that we are going to preserve that property? Or it's kind of like...
Yes, that's in the works. So we've received grant funding for that. The county has funded transaction costs on that, and we're in the process of surveying and writing the deed right now. So I would say within the next year, it would be closed and protected. So, yeah, it's pretty much a done deal.
We received state funding for that one, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's a Century family farm as well.
Contiguous and bigger, and yeah, okay.
Exactly. And I'll just say, I'm very excited to see these two projects because this is exactly the reason for these bond funds. And both of these projects really speak to the benefit of what the bond funds can do.
Is there a motion to address the budget amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second to approve the budget amendment. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, great job to everyone. Much appreciation to all the folks who worked hard to bring this together, including the property owners and all the different organizations. As Commissioner Wells said, these are, you know, beautiful pieces of property, and it's really exciting to see that they're going to be preserved for our future. Thank you so much, all right. The next item on the agenda is consideration of another budget amendment for appropriation request for 911 operations fund balance. John Hudson's here to help us out.
Good evening. So this budget amendment appropriates $1,027,946 of fund balance in the 911 fund to purchase recorder replacements, consoles, furniture, and software upgrades. No new county funds are required.
Is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Commissioners, we do have some board items to review. Let's go through those. The first one is the Asheville Planning and Zoning Commission. We have one reappointment. I'll move to reappoint Brenton Faircloth.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, next up is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have two reappointments.
Move to approve CC Weston and Natasha Adwaters.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? On jury commission, we have one reappointment.
I have reappointed Keith Thompson.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And on the Vaya Health Regional Board, we have one appointment.
Move to approve Ellis Matheson.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Commissioners, we come to the updates on boards and commissions. So are there any updates Commissioners have to share from any of the boards you serve on?
I don't have that, I was thinking that, don't we have some planning board decisions to make?
Yes, I was gonna, sorry. I was gonna let y'all finish your discussion on boards and commission reports, but if we need to go forward with discussion...
Let's go ahead and do that, Lamar.
Okay. So currently, we have one vacancy on the planning board. We have four applicants interested in being the appointee. Is there interest in interviewing or prior to the next meeting? And that would be on the 20th?
I'm interested in proceeding with interviewing.
Yeah.
Is there a specific time that y'all would like to start the interview? I don't know if Commissioners have other engagements that they need to consider.
As long as it's not an early childhood day, we can maybe do noon, same normal time.
Noon, is noon okay? Starting at noon on the 20th, February 20th, Tuesday. Okay, let's plan on starting around noon.
All right, and we'll provide lunch for the Commissioners. Fantastic. Also, there are two vacancies for alternate positions for the Board of Adjustments. Those vacancies have been there for a while. We've had the vacancies open for a little over a year. And we finally have two applicants and we have two positions. Would y'all like to interview for those positions that same day? Or how would you like for us to handle that?
That'd be great, I think so, yes.
Okay. Well, we will schedule those as well.
Terrific.
I don't know if there's any discussion that wants to be on the riverfront. Do y'all want to have any discussion?
So, yeah, we can talk about, I know that was discussed a little bit at the last, one of the last meetings. So the Riverfront Commission is a board that is, it's basically run through the city of Asheville. The city staffs it, but it does include some appointments from the city council and then some of the other local governments too. I think like Woodfin gets to appoint someone and then the county does. But one of the appointment positions is actually, according to the bylaws, is a county commissioner position. So just in terms of talking to the Commissioners, I don't, I mean, just candidly, I don't know that there's any commissioner that is interested in serving on it. So I've communicated that to Mayor Manheimer and, you know, that we're very supportive of efforts to improve water quality, support appropriate development on the riverfront. But that they're just, you know, we all serve on a lot of different boards and commissions and that. I don't think there's anybody interested in serving at this time. So that's been communicated. But is there anyone who would like to add this to the different boards and commissions that they serve on, just to confirm that? So, okay, I served on it after I was first elected. So anyway, I mean, we've shared that, but just to confirm that. So they're aware of that, I've sent an email. So they may want to look at their bylaws and think about whether they want to change it so that there's not a commissioner-designated spot, right? So anyway, that feedback's been relayed.
And we currently have two appointments that the Commissioners make that are residents as well. So we will have those appointments going forward. We still want to be a part of the board, we just don't want to have a commissioner appointment. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, you know, I've just, I've shared my feedback with the mayor about the fact that there's not a commissioner interested in serving. The city kind of drives this, right? So until they change it, I guess the ball's in their court on how to handle that.
We're still moving forward with the other positions that are just...
If somebody applies and wants to serve, then we would consider them for it, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, cool. All right, updates from other boards and commissions. That Commissioner Sherwin? Terry, did you have something you were going to report on?
Oh, we'll share this from Arlenda Scott. And those of you that serve on the MPO may know more details, but there was a presentation about our WNC passenger rail that Tristan shared. And so there seems to be quite a bit of excitement around the potential of that. I think they're in the corridor stage, if I understood that correctly. And they're talking about from Asheville to Salisbury, about 139 miles. And I thought it was interesting, our last passenger rail to Asheville ended in 1975, but it started in, I think, the late 1800s. So there's a lot of history with rail in western North Carolina. It seems to be a lot of excitement around bringing that back. So is there anything that y'all want to share from the MPO standpoint? Do you have any other details than what I just shared?
I mean, write your congressman, you're for it.
All right.
You left.
Yes. That was it for me.
Okay, great.
I'll just quickly highlight, we had a very productive Early Childhood Education Committee meeting today. Just looking at the landscape for North Carolina and our partnership with Dogwood and the amount of money that we need to continue to keep screaming for from our legislature and hopefully continued county support, just to flag that. But we had a childcare center that did shut down, another stepped up to kind of fill the gap there. And I think they did a, it was amazing, we got eight applicants when we weren't expecting any. So saving those slots and making sure that people can afford childcare is going to continue to be a priority. to be a priority. And just wanted to flag that as something that our committee's been working hard on. And Commissioner Whitesides and Beach Ferrara have been very diligent in kind of naming that as a priority for us and hope that stays a part of our priorities going forward.
The local emergency planning committee met this morning, and we had a follow-up presentation on lithium ion batteries. And they, as we know, are most popular rechargeables used today and working through how to properly dispose of them. And just know that this is, this is new, lots of lessons being learned, changes will be forthcoming, but that this group is really on top of it, working through that. The last thing that I'll share in regards to this is the next LEPC training will be in May at the new Asheville Fire Station. And all the groups will come together to discuss their training needs so that those training needs can be better planned cohesively across all of our units. So it was a, a very good meeting today. Thanks.
Our next meeting, I'll share some numbers from you, with us, from the ABL 5x5. At our last meeting, they were very good. And they sent them to me, but I forgot to share them with engagement people, but we'll have them to show at the next meeting.
Maybe just one quick update from the Affordable Housing Committee meeting that Commissioners Edwards and Sloan and I had this morning. We were also reviewing our metrics for how we're tracking the goals that we're pursuing on the affordable housing side. And I'd say overall, we're off to a really great start for our 2030 goals. Definitely the passage of the affordable housing bonds have been a great catalizer of supporting many strong projects that are, that are adding up towards helping us meet our goals. One of the ones in particular that we did, we did kind of like talk about, we're going to want to probably revisit, because some of our goals are, you know, they're very ambitious. They're not going to be easy to meet. But within the overall category of how much affordable housing we want to support construction on between now and 2030, we do have a specific amount for households that are at 30% area median income or lower. So like, you know, very deeply affordable units. And although they haven't all been constructed yet, right, some of these are just projects that have been planned and they, but they have committed funding that includes our funding. But we, we actually have met the goal already, which is great, and it means that we're, we're supporting good projects. But we, I think we also realize that's probably a goal that we set to, you know, we, we set too small of a number. So, but we're learning as we go. And so I think we will revisit that and we will probably adjust that goal. We'll go ahead and reset that since obviously it's, we're going to be something we're going to support a lot more projects on.
Commissioners, may I add?
Yes.
Do you remember that we're getting ready to work on our next five-year strategic plan? So this is perfect timing, as I hear you talk about goals and goal setting. Perfect time and perfect segue as we dig into that strategic plan, which will be coming in the next few months.
Terrific, terrific. We will also, we're about to undertake our annual review of the different proposals the county receives from different development partners and organizations who submit proposals to us on the affordable housing side. We did like an initial review of the applications that came in today and kind of much like on the conservation side, I think what we're seeing is that we're getting a very, like a really robust set of projects, right? So the community is responding to what we're doing and we're seeing, you know, a higher number of what looked like very strong projects coming in that we'll have a chance to, to review over the next couple of months. All right, any other updates? Got a couple of announcements. On February 20th at 3:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold a briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On February 20th at 5:00 PM, the commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. We do have a need for a closed session, and Mr. Fru can tell us the purpose.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we have several items to discuss. Request motion to go in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 31811A5. That's to discuss the price and other material terms of a proposed real estate contract. Three legal items, two which have are active lawsuits, Buncombe County and City of Asheville versus HCA Healthcare. That's U.S. District Court, 22CV147. And the Buncombe County versus Team Health Holdings lawsuit, U.S. District Court File 22CV420. And the third is just to discuss a matter and get legal or get direction from the board. These are all pursuant to 143, 31811A3. And finally, we have a personnel matter to discuss, and that's 143, 31811A6. Don't anticipate any, any matters to come back into open session, just direction from the board.
All right, is there a motion to go into closed session to address the items outlined by Mr. Fru?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in closed session, and as Mr. Fru said, when we read adjourn from the closed session, we don't anticipate taking any actions, we'll just adjourn the meeting.